I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of Wednesday, September 27th. Please stand for the pledge. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in keeping your thoughts, the well-being and safety of our staff and students. Thank you. Superintendent, please call her all.
Mr. Pagola, present.
Hey, Hale.
Present.
Mr. Gattro.
Present.
Mrs. Hubley will be late. Mrs. Lebo.
Present.
Mr. Santoro.
Present.
And May Coke. Also, we have with us tonight our student representatives from Quincy High School, Mina Altacredi, thank you for joining us tonight, as well as our North Quincy High School Student Representative, Amy Tan. So, as I announce your names, you could say, "Present." Mina Altacredi and Amy Tan. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Mrs. Owens, could you read the paragraph for recordings and videos?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. I'm now seeking a motion for the approval of the regular minutes. Moved by Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mr. Pagoli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes of September 13th. On a motion of Mrs. Hale, seconded by Mr. Gattro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In the ayes have it. If you would entertain us again, Mrs. Owens, and read the open forum statement.
Open forum is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or an employee of the Quincy Public Schools. Non-community persons not permitted to speak at open forum may submit written statements to the school committee. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Interested parties may also submit written statements to QSCO, uh, QSC Open Forum at quinsypublicschools.com.
Thank you, Mrs. Owens.
And then we know letters submitted.
Thank you. Okay, superintendent's report. Superintendent.
Thank you very much and good evening again, everyone. I'll begin with the Spring 2023 MCAS in Accountability data. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education publicly released the Spring 2023 MCAS data and accountability information last Tuesday. Individual scores or reports will be mailed out to families by mid-October, and we will be presenting an analysis of the district-level data at the next school committee meeting on October 11th. However, I do want to share with you the outstanding news that the Moncler Elementary School has been classified by DZI as a school of recognition, one of 66 schools statewide, which is amazing. Moncler was identified for the students demonstrating high achievement in growth in meeting or exceeding targets. Congratulations to Principal Renee Malvesti and the Moncler Elementary School staff on this great recognition. Of course, we'll have more for you on the October 11th meeting, obviously a more detailed analysis of all of the data for all of our schools at that meeting. Next, we received the, uh, we received recently by the, uh, a letter was received recently by the Quincy High School awarding, uh, Continued Niask Accreditation Committee, and that is obviously shared at your stations. The letter cites many of the impressive programs and services at Quincy High School, as well as areas for focus for the School Growth Improvement Plan, which is due on November 1st. So, uh, that, um, that plan is being worked on, um, pretty in-depth right now at Quincy High School, along with members of my, of the SLT and myself. So, again, we'll report, report further to you after that November 1 submission. Uh, next is the QPS Instrument Rental Night. This past Monday, 200 students in grades four and five were electing to join the elementary instrumental program, receive the selected woodwind and brass instruments, including saxophone, flute, trumpet, trombone, or clarinet. In addition, this week, students in those grades will see a demonstration of string instruments and have the opportunity to take lessons after school in violin, viola, and cello. Again, any students interested in this program, please reach out to their respective principals. Next is applications for the Quincy Public Schools Educated Mini Grants are being accepted through September 29th. Once again, the Quincy School Community Partnership will award 57 grants of $350 to support the academic, social, and emotional development of our students. The total of these monies is $20,000 and is made possible, again, by the generosity of our community partners, which is great. Uh, next is the Arbella Foundation and Boston Celtics All-Star Program. This is a program that has developed over time and offered at, um, just a couple of schools, one in the beginning and a couple last year. Well, this year, I'm very happy to report that thanks to Arbella and the Boston Celtics for the 2023 school year, all of our middle schools, all five of our middle schools, will participate in this great program. And this initiative aims to encourage regular school attendance and positive school culture in all of our five middle schools. So, a big thank you to Arbella Foundation and the Boston Celtics for expanding this program this year to all five of our middle schools. Next is the Lincoln Hancock Grade 2 students are being offered swim lessons through a partnership with the Hale Family YMCA. The swim, safety, and skills classes will run for eight weeks, beginning this week, and students will participate with, of course, parent permission. And finally, at the next school committee meeting on October 11th, we will presenting an in-depth update on the DeCristofaro Learning Center, including information on the program, the student, uh, and the staff transitions that will be coming. Um, also, the mayor wanted me to relay to you that this coming Monday, the city council has requested that he present, um, on the learning center with regard to the public buildings aspect of the project. And of course, you're all invited to attend that city council meeting, um, which will be this Monday. But again, we will be doing an, a comprehensive presentation to you on October 11th, which will include programming, as well as, um, the development of the building. I was in the building last week, uh, and it's almost ready for, uh, your visit. So, hopefully that will happen soon as well. And it's, um, it's looking very, very beautiful. Uh, so with that, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, superintendent. Questions, comments? Mrs. Hale.
I have one question. The, um, the Niask report for Quincy High, um, I thought it was great, and, you know, I really appreciated having it, a good look at it.
Mm-hmm.
Do we put, post that anywhere for, um, families to be able to see?
We can post it on our website, so.
Because I think it would be good for people to see the work that we've been doing in the school.
Sure, and they can see the progress.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, move to, um, new business, Student Support Services Program Improvement Plan. Ms. Papil to present.
Hey, good evening, all. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share, um, the Student Support Program Improvement Plan. I would just like to acknowledge all the principals, the educators, the student support staff, um, the students themselves and the families. A lot of these initiatives are school-wide initiatives, and so it really does take the whole school community to implement these things. Um, and I think that, um, it can be transformative for our system. We have a, a system to be proud of, and I hope that, um, my program improvement plan just moves us in that direction. So, I just wanted to really thank everybody for all their hard work in getting these things off the ground. Um, so I would like to start with a reflection of my goals from last year's, um, program improvement plan, if I could. And, um, I just with, um, a little note to, like, over the past two years, we did, um, take a systematic approach to making change and providing educators and students with important social, emotional learning, um, and to remove those barriers so that kids can be academically successful, have the social-emotional skills they need for lifelong success. And ultimately, that's what we want. We want to build community. We want kids to have a safe space, um, feel supported, and part of a community that they can be proud of. You know, every day I get to meet with students and staff, and, um, I'm just so impressed, and we're very lucky, we're a very lucky district to have the families and the students that we have. You can see on page seven, the Student Support Restorative Practices and Equity Work Group Team, that there were a collection, there's a collection of data that happens every year, and we analyze the high-risk data. And obviously, it's shown a great need for more social-emotional, school-based intervention and support for mental health. Um, the high risks are, um, you know, that, that occurs when a student may be experiencing, um, you know, so, a mental health crisis. And so those numbers really, they tripled, um, you know, you know, the amount of incidences that happen for students, and we saw a great need, um, to increase our services in that area. So, um, you know, building those community circles and helping kids feel safe were an important part of prevention for mental health crisis, but unfortunately, we did see an increase. And you can see on page seven that, um, there was, um, also, um, progress in supporting the use of restorative practices and social-emotional learning through professional development. So, the team really looked at, um, you know, what ways can we prepare educators and student support staff and principals to, you know, be able to provide those, those things, those restorative practices and community circles and social-emotional learning. And, um, I think they, they did a nice job in meeting those, those two goals to, you know, take a look at the data, then provide the professional development, and then implement, um, the initiatives that we did. On page eight, um, each site last year implemented open parachute lessons, and that was, you know, you've seen that, we presented that, that's that, um, video-based platform, SEL platform. Each school improvement plan, um, with the support of the superintendent and the assistant superintendent and the principals, they included that in their school improvement plan. So, I think that had a huge impact in making sure that we got that off the ground. I feel that, you know, people did a really nice job implementing that. They all had, um, you know, certain lessons targeted for certain grades, um, you know, they had the student support staff do some PD in their staff meetings and support the educators. So, I feel like that goal was met. On page eight, um, you'll also see, um, I'm sorry, page nine, you'll also see the supervisors of attendance, um, and, you know, we had to take another look because we were having so many kids that were refusing to come back to school and be re-engaged, um, that, you know, the way they were, and it's been taking some time to do that. You know, I did provide some statistics in the appendix about, like, how many times, you know, um, the supervisors of attendance went out, you know, to address attendance issues, um, mental health crisis, you know, that was kind of new for them. They, you know, um, didn't usually do that, that wasn't really in their purview before, but, you know, given, um, the issues that, you know, and the challenges that kids and families were facing, for those kids that were having a hard time overcoming that barrier, we, we had to, um, improve our practices. On page 10 and 11, you'll see the homeless liaison and all the work that she does. You know, this is, this is a continuation goal. I feel like she always meets her goal. She works tirelessly, she, there was over 200 homeless students in our, in our district. She works with so many agencies, you can see, um, you know, she works with DTA, DCF, Man at Health, Father Bills Main String, I'm sorry, Main Spring. And on page 11, you can see a whole list of the, the agencies that she collaborates with to help families get housed, help families understand their rights, um, so that the education is not disrupted for students just because they become homeless. On page 12 and 13, um, you know, we set goals this year, it, they are continuation goals because these are big initiatives. It's not just like you check a box and it's done. We want to make sure that the restorative practices are having, happening in every classroom so that these community meetings are happening. We're off to a good start already this year. You know, at the, um, last, um, principal's professional development meeting, you, the student support staff with their principals, you know, talked about community circles, um, they be, they already started them, you know, um, I was talking to a guidance counselor today, she's, you know, went in and helped a teacher do it, and the teacher was like, felt like so good, um, about the way the circle went, they're gonna do, you know, weekly check-ins, and that's just kind of what we want. We want, you know, um, that comfort level to happen so that, um, like, the, the classroom norms are made with students and things like that. So, all those things take time, it's culture change, so I, that is a continuation goal. We also, um, have joined with some new organizations. I put some program descriptions in the appendix. The NAMM Project is one of them, that's Mental Health Awareness and Suicide Prevention. That's a new organization for us. Previously, we had worked with the Samaritans. I chose the NAMM Project because, um, they have young peers that come and tell their stories of hope, and, um, I think that's really impactful. They also offer some other free services, and the description is in the back, I'll be glad to talk to you more about that if you wish. On page 23, um, the, oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out, on pages 17 and 20, you'll see a list of the related professional development for all of the initiatives. And so I think it's really rich. We have, you know, grant money that we're using to get this done, we have partnerships with, um, agencies to get this done, so I feel like, you know, it's a solid professional development plan. On page 23, the goal for the supervisors of attendance, again, is going to be to look at those different kinds of interventions to help those families and to increase the attendance rate by 5% overall for the district. So, they work really, really hard, and you can see by how many visits they do on those statistics. And they also have the dual role of ensuring that, um, people who attend, I'm sorry, students who attend Quincy Public Schools live in the city, so they do the residency checks, and that takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. So, um, they're vigilant about that, working with the sites, um, because, although we're very flattered when people try to attend Quincy Public Schools, we, um, aren't able to accommodate those, um, students that are, are not living in the city. We need to make sure that, um, we check residency, and they're very good at that. So, I would say that, um, you know, that, you know, with those, with that dual role, the other thing that we do that's really helpful is the family assistance conferences, and you can see, um, on page 24, there's a schedule, um, of those conferences, and I attend those conferences. You know, we have families come in, we meet with families, we try to strategize with families as a prevention to a CRA, which is a child requiring assistance. We don't like to file those court petitions, um, so we, we do a lot of preventative work, we do a lot of interventions. Sometimes we're referring to special education, sometimes we're getting other agencies involved, sometimes we ask a Walker clinician to come in, um, and meet with kids. So, a lot happens during those meetings. Um, and, you know, the parents are usually really grateful, you know, these are, this is not because people want to keep their kids home, there's challenges and struggles that are, that are hard. On page 25, the goals for the homeless liaison are continuation goals. She works all summer, she does, like, all the transportation requests, she is, she is incredible. So, um, I think that it's an ever-changing situation with all the new regulations and the resources, and, you know, she can rattle off all those things, and she needs to keep us informed, and she does a really nice job about that, but that's an ongoing goal for her. And in Appendix B, you can see the, um, number of homeless students by level. And just the last thing I want to say before I, I take questions is that, uh, the professional development plan for, um, November 7th, all the things that I have in the, my related professional development are gonna be offered to educators. So, it might not look exactly the same, so like, the NAMM Project is gonna do something for educators on, on that November 7th day. Walker is gonna do trauma-informed classrooms for that day. So, things that are really dedicated for educators to get some of that SEL, um, opportunity and, um, restorative practice opportunity will be there on that day. And I am able to offer, or the district is able to offer, um, restorative practice training for those who haven't had it yet, um, through grant money through Suffolk. So, if they go to the overview on that November 7th day, they're able to follow up and participate in a cohort. So, we're trying to keep everybody trained and prepared. So, thank you so much.
Questions? Mr. Gattro.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of questions, page seven. The numbers, it says, um, based on the high-risk data submitted to the director, there were three times the number of high-risk referrals in '21, '22, and then it said, "This past year, the number is approximately 25% higher." Is that 25% higher than, than the '21, '22 data?
Yes, so it tripled, and then it became, it was 25% higher than that.
Higher than that.
Okay.
And the, and you said, "High risk" meaning mental health issues, is it, is this based on diagnosis, or self-reporting, or both?
Both, it could be both. I mean, it's, you know, when a student is experiencing, you know, distress, um, you know, um, and we feel like that student needs to be further evaluated because we can't make a determination around, you know, what that child might need for follow-up services, so we, um, you know, refer that student to Aspire, which is the Crisis Center. And whenever that happens, whenever we make that referral, we document that, and the, obviously, the parent, you know, we have, we call the parent, is the first thing we do. And we try to get everybody together and make sure that that child is okay and gets what he or she needs.
And, and do, do we quantify how many are based on self-reporting and diagnosis?
I mean, you know, sometimes it'll be a friend that will report their concern about their friend, and then, you know, there'll be an intervention, you know, that, you know, things happen that way, sometimes there's a self-report, but it's all, you know, documented in those reports, how, you know, what, you know, how the child was referred.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that you're creating programs that allow students to feel more comfortable disclosing, correct?
Correct.
And so, I'm wondering if because we've created those programs, have the self-reporting numbers gone up significantly?
I don't think I can answer that. I think that, um, mental health is a, an issue around the country, do you, you know, mental health concerns, so I, I can't tell whether that's just like the uptick, you know, because of, I didn't want to mention COVID, but, you know, because of COVID, um, and the repercussions from that, and, you know, kids hadn't been to school, um...
Yeah, I mean, my, my theory was, and I don't know if you're validating it or not, is that we've created a mechanism for students to feel comfortable sharing that they have anxiety, or depression, or other issues, and therefore, our numbers have spiked.
I think, oh, sorry.
But again, I'm, I'm wondering if the self-disclosure, based on the support that we've put in place, maybe the numbers were always there, but now that we've created an environment for people to talk about it, maybe that, you know, I mean, when, um, you know, when Sue Chandler was here and we talked about domestic violence and how domestic violence is under-reported, um, you know, if you get more people to report it, those numbers are gonna go up. Does that mean that domestic violence has gone up? It might mean that, you know, they've done a great job getting people to disclose that they've been assaulted, you know, or, or have a domestic violence issue. So, what, what I'm trying to get at is, were our programs successful in getting more self-disclosure out there, or are there a variety of factors of which we don't necessarily know and we haven't reached, but the numbers just keep going up higher? I, I think Erin gets what I'm saying, yeah.
So, I would say that, you know, we're trying to do away with the stigma around mental health, and we've made some great inroads around that through, like, open parachute, for example, like, in, in the 10th grade health classes, you know, mental health was a topic. So, I think if kids feel like, you know, their mental health, you know, people are aware of their mental health, mental health is important, you know, that kind of thing, that they're more likely to talk about their mental health. So, I do think it's a combination of things. I do think that there are some repercussions from, that, you know, from COVID and not being in school, I do think that, so I think that does account for it, I think people are experiencing things more. But I do feel that we are creating an atmosphere, like you said, through intervention, so that kids feel safe to have that conversation with trusted adults in the building.
No, I mean, I understand the '21, '22 being three times higher, then we implemented the programs, and so, after we implemented the programs, it went up an additional 25%. And, and so, I'm trying to figure out, are more people just unwell, and now that COVID, we're a year out of COVID, or whatever the case may be, um, was it self-disclosure, or are there other contributing factors to the mental health crisis that we need other support in place?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we face all kinds of challenges, you know, and I, I do think, I feel like things are getting better, and I think part of that is because we have built in, um, these systems, you know, to, um, you know, create a place where kids feel like, okay, you know, I can experience, you know, depression or anxiety, um, but there's hope, do you, do you know what I mean? So, like, I feel like, you know, there's a hope to get help, like, it's, it's okay that I'm experiencing these things. Um, and so, the, I think, like, the connections, having those connections in school are very, very helpful. I think we're, you know, we can always do more and do better. And I think by getting SEL, having those conversations, having educators comfortable with those conversations, those SEL conversations, um, through, like, open parachute, that reinforces, like, you can talk to me, you can trust me, and I care about you, you know?
Yeah.
And so I think you're right. I think that, you know, building those relationships and having that safe space may have contributed to the number of referrals that we get.
Yeah, it would just be nice if we could quantify that, if we could figure out what's around that. Okay, so, uh, next question is on page nine. The, um, so on page seven, you provided numbers about changes, which we just talked about. On page nine, on chronic absenteeism, you, you didn't provide any, uh, baseline data. So, in, in '21, '22, did the number change from the prior year, and then in, in '23, did it change, '22, '23? Were there changes, up or down, in terms of chronic absenteeism?
I, I believe our chronic absentee, you know, has risen, you know, the, the rate has risen from year to year, you know, the number of absences. I don't believe, I have not looked at last year's data, I'm not sure that it's out yet, but I could be wrong around that.
It is, it is out.
Yep.
So, we're gonna actually present on that, that's part of our accountability, um, indicators, and so we actually have all that data and are gonna present on, uh, about that on the 11th.
Okay.
And I would say, actually, we did pretty well last year, considering it actually went down from the year before. So, we're, we are definitely heading in the right direction, yeah, it went down.
Thank you.
So, we, you'll be, I think you'll be very pleased when you see, um, you know, how we did in that area, given, you know, all of the things that have gone on in the world and in our community, you know, with sickness and COVID and those kinds of things.
And then final question, on page 23, this mentions attendance as well. Is this chronic, or is this, uh, just regular attendance? The goal.
Oh, it's, it's for chronic, so if it, if...
Okay.
So, the chronic absenteeism rate?
So, that's the corresponding goal to set, to seven, I mean, to page nine? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think 23 is the, is the new goal, is the, the new goal, that was not in the previous goal, the 5%, I added that this year.
Oh, that's a, you're saying that's a new goal, and that's around chronic absenteeism?
Correct.
Got it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Actually, I had a couple of questions that Mr. Guttrow had presented, but in terms of the, the attendance officers, one question I have, like, how do we identify where to send them for residency checks, you know? Because here you have like, 581 students. How do, how do we identify that, and how do we know where to send them?
So what happens is when new families come in, you have to provide certain paperwork to show that, to prove your residence. If you don't have that, that's an automatic residency check. And then, one of the biggest indicators, believe it or not, is returned mail. So if you get returned mail, there's a problem.
Okay.
And then we get, you know, we get reports, we get, you know, so they follow up.
And they follow up on that. And then also with, in the same vein, when we send the staff out, do, do they get any training on, because I kind of worry a little bit about them going into situations that might be a little bit disruptive and, you know, maybe unsafe, I don't know if I want to say that, but do they get any like, de-escalation training? If they think they're stepping into a situation that isn't really going to be a positive one, do we have security or resource officers go with them? And, and how do we determine that? Like, how do we say, okay, you're going to go to XYZ, you know, we think it might be a situation that you might need some, some backup or some support? Do we, do they communicate that well?
Well, when they do, night checks. So then they have to go like, past, you know, the school day and into the evening, just to, because families aren't home during the day, to, you know, make sure that kids are living there or whatever. They do go with the school resource officer, they don't go alone. We know our families, you know, if it's, it's an attendance issue, if a child is not attending. So, you know, usually, we have a very nice relationship with families, they're just struggling with whatever for attendance, so the attendance officer, you know, will, it's not the first, if they're going out to the house, this is not the first contact, you know what I mean? So like, you know, the guidance counselor's been involved, the principal's been involved. If they need assistance, you know, oftentimes, a guidance counselor will go out with them. They all have training in the social service field, you know, before they came to QPS too, so they all have their unique set of skills. That's why they were hired, because it is like a social work slash, you know, kind of supervisor of attendance position.
And, and in terms of them, there's a line in there about how they assist students to come back and how they, you know, get them to come back to school. What kinds of things, what kinds of techniques or strategies do they use in with the kid who doesn't really want to come to school? Like, what, what could they do to, to pull them in and get them to want to come?
We always start with the positive stuff, so that, you know, we, you know, they'll say, you know, we need some gift cards for these kids, so, you know, we'll get gift cards as incentives, they meet with the kids at school, you know, encourage positive attendance. So we try all the positive things first. Then, oftentimes, it may be like, a child is not placed in the right educational program and they're struggling, and, you know, school just does not feel good. So then we pull in, you know, we collaborate with special education, we say, hey, can we take a look at this, you know, this student, see what we can help with? So, you know, we'll try that. Or we'll say, you know, it seems like, you know, there's been some loss in the family, you know, so a student might be struggling with depression. You know, these are not easy, easy things. And these kids, they want to be in school, they want to do well. It's just that something has gotten in their way, and they're kind of stuck, you know? So we have to figure out, we work really hard to figure out what it is that we can do to help these families and these students get on track. So that's an outside referral, you know, or a school-based referral. It just, it just depends. Is it, you know, there's been a bullying incident, you know, so do we need to take a look at that, you know? So we, do we need a modified day, just to get you back on your feet a little bit? Like, we try everything.
Okay, to get them back. When you just mentioned bullying, and this will be my last, turn it over to my colleagues, but as far as the restorative justice and the open parachute, you know, and, and having the increase of students coming forward with issues that they might be having, and when we look at the data, do we find that those systems are helping with, you know, maybe bullying situations in, in the classroom, you know, incident reports that way? Has it also been helping with those kinds of incidents? Do we find, or mostly just the increase in the reporting?
So, what we're, what we're really trying to do is look at the number of incidents that we have, whether it's a bullying incident, or a discipline incident, and look at, like, making sure we do, whatever we need to do, discipline-wise, needs to happen sometimes. You know, sometimes you have to do the discipline. And then, we look at a restorative practice to bring kids back together. You know, we talk a lot about helping kids take accountability, which is really, really hard to do. Take accountability, it's hard for adults, you know, but to take accountability and then repair what they can, to repair those relationships, that's so important after an incident happens, because these kids have to go to school together and move forward together. And how are they going to do that? And it's not, you can't say, just stay away from each other, or just, that just isn't enough sometimes, you know? Sometimes you really need to go back and repair what you can.
So I guess my, my question is, is more like, are we looking at the data? So, how long have we been doing open parachute and the restorative practices?
So, the last two years, we started restorative practices. And then, last year, we did open parachute. We were able to buy that through, pay for that through a grant.
So we look at, we can look at the data in June '23, and kind of compare it to before we started using it, and then maybe at the end of this year, have another comparison to see if it's making a difference in the incidents reports, as well as the reporting of, of the students who are coming for social, emotional issues. I think that's kind of what I'm thinking about, like, looking at that data and seeing how much of an impact it's really having in the classroom, you know? And I think that's it, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just have a cou, couple of questions and a comment. We're down, are we still down one person with the attendance officers, with Jen being out? Or do we have a substitute?
We don't have a substitute. We do have somebody that's helping us with residency checks. We have another staff member that's helping with the residency checks portion of that. But we don't, I, we're in search of somebody to come in and help out.
Despite that. Well, my concern is obviously at the beginning of the year, that's when we have a lot of the residency checks being done, because we have a lot of move-ins. And being down one, and then having a substitute, I don't think is, is not the best scenario, obviously.
We are getting the residency checks done, though. We are. We have prioritized that. Because we know how important that is. Because we can't let, unfortunately, we can't let students start until we verify their residency, and we still hold to that.
Right. And, through you, Superintendent, I'd spoken to you at the end of last year about maybe adding another attendance officer, preferably a male, so that we could balance it out a little bit, and maybe make it, not, not that the females can't handle themselves, but maybe make it a little more safe, in terms of going to a door and confronting a situation that might be not, not, not great. I know that when a police officer goes to a door for a domestic, that's the worst type of call that he or she can get. And that's my concern.
That's something, that's something we can certainly look at with regard to budget and creating new positions potentially for next year. And of course, that would be, if that's a recommendation of this committee, we'll certainly make sure that happens. But as Mrs. Beal said, we make sure that our attendance officer is not going to homes alone. Our school resource officers accompany them, particularly on any concerning visits, but certainly any nighttime visits. That's, that's a for-sure assignment for our school resource officers.
And I, you know, I know they do a great job, but I think three is still an inadequate number across the board, because we're, we're growing. We're not, we're not losing kids, we're gaining kids weekly. And, so it's not going down. Second, I know that, you know, when I was in the business back in, back in the day, that there are some situations that, that a, a school counselor cannot handle, and they have to know when to refer out, outside. Do you have statistics on how many outside referrals are made by our counselors? Just my counselors?
I have some. You, you know, at the end of the year, counselors do, and psychologists do end-of-the-year reports, and they, we do ask them to say how many students have been referred for outside counseling, or how many 51As were filed, so I do have some.
Okay. And along those lines, emergency referrals, where a student had to be removed from the school in an emergency to get treatment, are we up, down, same? What's that look like, Mar?
So, you're right. When there's like, a high-risk referral, it doesn't mean that the student is removed from the school. Usually, what we try to do is have the family make an appointment at the crisis center, so that we're not having children like, leave the school by ambulance. You know, we really try to avoid that. I think, you know, sometimes we can't.
Either or, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, okay, yeah. So that was in the high-risk, the data for the, that we looked at, you know, at the district level, that, that number tripled one year and was up 25% from that number. So I would say, you know, it is on the increase.
And then, last, 21 of our students had 51As filed. Is that across the whole system? Because that seems low. I saw it on, pick what page I saw it on.
I'm sorry, what do you? Oh, that, that was just the supervisors of attendance, and their statistics? Yeah, that's just their statistics. That's not district-wide.
Not district-wide. Because I thought that was very, very low.
Yeah.
Okay, and do you have a number on that?
I'm not off the top of my head, but I do have that number.
Okay.
I can get it to you.
Not, not critical, but just, just a question. Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Great, great job with this. I really appreciate the work we're into. The professional development is amazing across the board. I have a couple of questions. I really, I did some research on the NAN project, and it looks really good. It's hard to put a lot of new things in place all the time and figure out how you assess them, whether they're doing it. But I do think, to Mr. Guttrow's point, sometimes when we put good things in place, we get more mental health referrals. So when we go out and look at kids who have chronic absenteeism, we're going to get more anxiety referrals. And so I think you can't really, you can't really, you can't, it's not like you can't really weigh those things. You might want more of those referrals, because otherwise, those kids aren't doing well. So I think it's really difficult to just say, why are we getting more of them? I think because we're doing a lot of stuff, and I think when you do things like open parachute, and even the NAN stuff, you'll probably get more referrals, unfortunately, but it's fortunate as well. So, I, I just, I don't, I'm not too concerned about the, the number and the increase. I have a question about, what is Build Up Youth? I never heard of that, and it was in the plans.
Yeah, that, that is, that is a program that helps us look at substance, substance use data through Bay State Community Services. So we, you know, we work with them, you know, to provide substance use prevention, and we met with them last year, so we collaborate with them.
Okay, thank you. I could have probably asked Mrs. Hoobley, she probably would have been able to tell. A couple of other questions. The homeless coordinator, phenomenal, phenomenal goals, really disappointing to see some of that money, the federal money going away. And I'm wondering, it's probably was Esther money, that, that money came in and was helping parents with rental assistance. So they're not accepting anybody new, but if they, are they helping the people that they've been helping, or are they, is that all going to go away?
I'm not sure. It's hard to know. I mean, you know, you know, there are some programs that were pre-COVID, that, you know, existed, like the Raft, you know what I mean, like, and things like that, but I, I'm not sure, you know, where those programs are going to go. The housing is, it's, people get really stuck in the shelter system. It's hard to get affordable housing.
Mayor's office on, through the mayor's public assistance funding that he may have available, to help supplement what will be lost at the federal level. So I know that he is aware of it. We've had many discussions about it, and he's trying to develop a safety net, so that any individuals that are not captured by this loss of, that, that wouldn't be helped by the loss of this funding, would be helped potentially through city, city services. So we can partner, hopefully, with the city side on this issue.
And the state is still in the game, too, but, you know, so that would be good. I have another question about the unaccompanied youth. What's the definition, and what, how old are they, and what is the definition of an unaccompanied?
So, primarily, high school students that do not have a guardian.
Do not have a guardian?
They do not have a, for whatever reason, and what, what happens is, they are like, like couch, what they call couch surfing, like staying with friends for short periods of time, sometimes. Sometimes, a family has taken them in, because a parent is not able to, you know, they might have DCF involvement, you know, in foster care, so those kids, so she helps all those kids, those kids, she works really, really hard, and she has relationships with like, UMass Boston, and some School on Wheels, like, all these organizations that help those kids, like, so when they transition from high school to, a lot of these kids go to college, they're amazing, you know, that, you know, their parents are struggling with, you know, an issue that they can't care for them in the way that they would want to, and Leslie does a really nice job making sure those kids are, she does their FAFSA forms for them, she gets those connections going. It's really pretty unbelievable, the work she does with the guidance staff.
Yeah. So, so, do, is there any, hopefully, this is, the answer to this is no, but is there any like, liability of us taking kids in who the guardians haven't said it was okay to take them in? You know, I worry about like, a 16-year-old or a 15-year-old who says, I'm, I'm sleeping on my cousin's couch, my mother can't handle it. I don't, I don't know. I hope that's not the case, but I just worry about, how do we determine that we're the best place for the kid, or that it's okay for us to take the kid? Does the parent ever come after us, Far?
Well, it's, it's really, you know, it's, we would file a 51A if the child wasn't being cared for, so, you know, it's, it's more of a, like, another family maybe caring for the, you know, a Quincy family, it's not like.
Right, oh, right, no, I don't think.
You know what I mean? So it's like red. So, so we, we just, you know, we're, we just make sure that that child has an education, and then we support that child as best we can with whoever they're with, whether they're in foster care, or.
How many unaccompanied youth would you say we might see in a year?
I would say, is there a number on the, there might be a number on the statistics, but I would say like, 12, 13 kids, around there.
It's interesting that our number of homeless students is very consistent, year by year by year.
Yeah, yep.
It really is, it's amazing to me. Except for the little kids, everybody else is really consistent. So, I was really happy to see that there's a timeline for the lessons, on page 16, I think, for the, for the school psych, psychologist counselors and support staff, that there's a, by January, there's, I know that we did a curriculum map of the social-emotional learning, and now there's going to be a timeline, so that we'll know which, where the lessons are being taught. And I think that's so important, to make sure we tighten that up. I think it was on page 16. I had a couple of questions about the homeless, I mean, the, the attendance offices, but really, I thank you, I think that we got those answered. I was really concerned about them going alone also. I think that's a difficult thing to ask them to do, anybody to do, I don't care if it's a man or a woman, really, it's a tough thing to ask them to do. And on the, page 12, I think it is, student support, you wanted to do one appropriate interaction for every student. Did we manage to do that last year, Mar, do you know? For every student that was referred to the, to the student support teams?
You know, we may, probably, but I, you know, we're trying to get, like, everybody to, you know what I mean, to make sure we do.
It's a lot, it's a lot of changes.
Yeah, I mean, you just don't want any kid to be missed. That's why, you know, I want people to stop and think and look at the interventions.
So that's moving forward, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. My last question is, and it comes up about a lot of things. I noticed in the technology improvement plan, that there's a, there's a software that we're paying for, which is Incident IQ. I don't know if that has anything to do with the kind of incidents you see, or if that's something else, maybe that's through the superintendent, what that software is.
We can ask the IT team coming up. We can ask the IT team coming up. We have all, I'm not sure which one that goes to, but they'll be able to answer that question when they come up.
Just that we've asked the question several times about the incidents and what's happening. And if we, we would like some sort of report on that across the board, you know, the kind of incidents we're talking about. I don't know what they're talking about.
No, I don't think so. I think it's like, I, I don't believe so. I think it might have more to do with like IT.
We have asked a couple of times to have more information about the kind of incidences that are happening in the schools so that we can make sure that we're giving the support that schools need. So I just would like to make sure that stays on the agenda someplace. And did you ever use any of the vocal survey data to, to, to inform what you're doing?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like it kind of flows together about like, you know, the importance of making sure kids feel safe, that they belong, that they're not being bullied. Do you know that it's the climate and the culture indicators?
So that helps inform your work, is all I'm saying.
Yes, yes, yeah.
I'm good. Thank you very much. This was great.
Thank you.
Thank you. This was wonderful. Really, really good. I did also want to thank you for putting in the displaced and foster care children numbers from last year, 209. That's, those are, those are our Quincy Public School kids and they need a little extra help. And it's good that you put it by school. I appreciate that. Looking at that way, it's very helpful. I just had a question. In Appendix D, looking through the, looking through the units and the lessons, and it appears by grade level that it's different per school. And I was wondering why, why that wouldn't be the same unit, same grade for each school? Why wouldn't they be having the same units? Because, and it also looks like, even if you look at just grade one, it looks like some grade ones in some schools have more that they're looking at than other schools might have more in their, in their, more units. So I was, I was curious as to why that's different.
Yeah. We were getting to know the platform. And so if you didn't do the checks for learning, you didn't show up on the report. So they could have done a lesson and not done the end check for learning. So when you run the report through Open Parachute, it didn't give you credit for doing the lesson. So this was just a snapshot, but now we know how to use it. They also added a feature which I really appreciate. It's not just checks for learning, like did you understand the concept? Would you know how to, you know, report something that you are uncomfortable with? You know, those kinds of things from the lesson. They also do wellness checks, like, you know, social emotional wellness checks for kids. And I want to say about, you know, your point, Emily, about the, like getting different initiatives in and then requiring more services because we become more aware. And with the NAN project, at the end of the presentation, they do, they ask three questions. Do you need to see someone right away? Do you need to see someone within the week? Or are you okay? You know, do you not need to see anybody? So that, there will be, you know, referrals. And so the guidance staff will be prepared for that. I'm really excited about the NAN project because they are stories of hope. So they're young adults that have had those challenges. So it, it's a good thing. It's about how to navigate mental health issues.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Pucoli?
I'm sorry, just a follow-up. You were talking about finding out how to figure out who's not actually in the school system. A few years ago, I suggested that we send letters to the receiving school. And if those letters kick back to QPS, we had a pretty clear indication that those kids were not living with us anymore. Is that still something we, we do?
Yeah.
Yes?
As Mrs. Papil stated, that's one of the key indicators for us, that a student is not living where they say they're living when we get the mail that's returned to us.
Yeah, so is that, is that still in place then?
Actually, the return mail comes to me. And then I farm it out to the schools to check up on.
Good.
And frequently, what's, frequently what's happening, because it's in the summertime that the mailing happens, is we find those, some of those students have moved away. And, you know, they are then dropped as students at the beginning of the school year.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank you, Ms. Papil, and your team for recognizing what our kids need. And then going out to search for resolution and, and solutions to those problems. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very rewarding report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Superintendent, do we need a vote to approve that plan?
Yes.
On a motion of Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, we accept the student support services program improvement plan. Superintendent?
Voice vote is fine.
Voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes aye. Health service program improvement plan, Ms. Hubley.
Good evening, Superintendent and members of the school committee.
Assistant Superintendent. Thank you for having me. I'd just like to take some time to review the health services team goals from the 22-23 school year and to share our 23-24 team goals. Last school year, during our professional development, we focused on enhancing nursing assessment skills and knowledge of the newly revised state-manded vision screenings. There were new protocols that became effective as of September '22. And you can find that information on page seven and eight in the PIP. We completed 5,962 vision screenings using the new practices. And we thank our community members for helping us to secure all the new equipment we needed. Our wellness team initiatives began to return with the health fair at Marymount, the Point Webster, Clifford Marshall Fun Run, blood pressure checks for staff, and flu vaccine clinics at every school. Nurses worked with our online training modules for our software program SNAP to learn updated practices that are aiming to decrease paper usage in the health office. And additionally, we'd like to thank Marley Casely at the Quincy Health Department as all nurses participated in a training called Stop the Bleed. And we're now able to go out and teach that lesson, which is something we, we need to look into more. As we enter the 23-24 school year, our goal as listed on pages nine and 10 will be to continue to focus on infectious disease prevention to encompass not only COVID, but other infectious diseases as well. Our emphasis will be on recognizing and reporting illness symptoms, vaccinations, hand washing, and understanding the DPHDZ and CDC guidelines for COVID that unfortunately are still being used. So some of the initiatives that we'll be doing, the nurses have already done a training for all of the staff at the very first principal's meeting. They used a uniform PowerPoint slideshow to go ahead and do that teaching. The guidelines and information for a healthy school year flyer, that went out the first week of school. It went out not only in paper form, but also electronically as a small newsletter. The nurses are tracking students who are diagnosed with infectious illnesses. That's something we do normally. So there is no separate tracking for COVID anymore. The nurses will design, update bulletin boards. They'll use colorful messages. They'll reinforce important infection prevention measures for the students. They'll communicate with Quincy Health Department for any infectious illnesses that we need to call them for and get them on board with. And as always, they provide very much individualized health teaching to all the students that cross their path every day. This year, during our professional development, we're going to focus on enhancing more nursing assessment skills. We'll have presentations from Broston Children's Hospital for ENT, which is ear, nose, and throat assessments, as well as orthopedic injury assessments. And we'll receive a food allergy update. The nurses will also receive a comprehensive seizure training for school nurses given by the Epilepsy Foundation of New England. Our Health Nutrition and Wellness Advisory Council meets four times a year. And our main goal will be to promote wellness during the school year. The advisory council provides guidance and support to individual school wellness teams, as well as reviews our wellness and concussion policies on a yearly basis. This year, we'll be using Mass Healthy Smiles. They'll come to our schools to provide cleanings, sealants, and fluoride treatments to our students. And if students require treatment beyond this, then the hygienist, along with the nurse, will refer out the students and connect them with local dentists for ongoing dental care. In the appendix, starting on page 15, there, I had included a link in there. If you had used the link, you could go in and see the actual PowerPoint we used to train all the staff with. The flyer was in there as well. Sample handwashing instruction guide. Some have them hanging in their office. Some will hang them on a bulletin board somewhere in the school. And they use these things to meet their goals. So the data from the 22-23 end-of-the-year report, which is on page 16 in the appendix, reflects how much our nurses are working to keep our community safe and healthy. There were 91,088 student encounters. So these are any visits that come into the health office. And that is up from 75,870 in the 21-22 school year. Of these 91,000 students, 79,502 were returned to class after visiting the health office due to the nurse assessing that they were okay to go back to class. So this is approximately a 93.3% return to class rate, which is up from 90.2% the previous year. This definitely demonstrates the impact that the school nurse has on keeping students in school. They cared for 3,280 students with special healthcare needs, which is an increase of 526 students. There were 56 head injuries that occurred possibly during school sports or any kind of in-school activity like recess or phys ed. And there were 24 that occurred during other activities that were outside of school. So may have happened at home and just was reported to the nurse at school. The school nurses work very closely with the students who have been diagnosed with a concussion. They collaborate with the student, the parents, the primary care providers, the school staff, the athletic trainers, to monitor the medical management of the student. And they work with the school staff to adjust their academic schedules whenever necessary and provide them with the accommodations that they need to continue to access their learning. There were 10,840 scheduled doses of prescription medications administered. This is an increase of 821 doses. And these are meds that doctors have prescribed that the kids need during the school day. There were 4,279 additional medication doses that are given on an as-needed basis. So this is a decrease, and it's most likely due to we had a shortage of children's liquid Tylenol. That was a big one. It still continues now. But we are also committed as nurses to teaching students how to manage their discomfort with other means before giving them their medicine. So like ice, heat, rest, maybe some relaxation techniques, things like that. There were 18,036 documented nursing communications to parents or guardians, 7,710 communications with school staff, 973 with community agencies. These showed some decrease. And a lot of that, I believe, is reflected in not needing to reach out as much regarding COVID. So that's kind of a welcome decrease at that point. We have seven nursing staff who are CPR instructors. They continue to offer CPR AED classes to our staff. 168 staff members were certified last year. And we have, I believe, five classes that we'll be running this year. With the help of Brewster Ambulance, the Matter of Heart Initiative resulted in all eighth-grade students learning hands-only CPR. And in addition, 48 people completed the full certification class that was offered on the Saturday at Central Middle School. This initiative will continue again this school year. Thank you for your time and your support, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you so much. So two quick questions. One, the Dental Smiles Program, what schools will they be at?
All schools.
All of them. We're going to have them at all the schools? Wonderful. And then on the back page, we were talking about the data. We have in 2022, 21-22 data, you have 344 for life-threatening allergies. And then that went to 542 in 22-23. And this year, we have 557. Is there something, that's a big jump?
It is a big jump. I couldn't even begin to guess what the jump is due to. I know we've seen a lot of changes in people's healthcare since COVID. And that's about the only thing that I've seen or heard. But in relation to food allergies, I don't know, other than maybe they're recognizing them more or they're being more cautious when someone has a mild allergy. Instead of saying, let's wait and see, they're being given the medication right from the get-go.
Yeah, that's very concerning. That's, that's a very large jump. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This was great. The data is amazing, absolutely amazing. And all I can say is, those poor nurses, past few years. I mean, thank goodness, these referrals are so much less. 24,000, I mean, it's 19,000 without, I go to CIC stuff and calling everybody about every test. That was, the way they worked during COVID was, I mean, it was wonderful to see, but it was really so, so, almost abusive, the stuff they had to do. I felt so bad for them during, I was working as a school nurse and I was horrified myself. So it was really amazing to see that. Thank goodness, they're getting back sort of to normal numbers that they can participate in. The guidelines for a healthy school year, I still don't know what the guidelines are for COVID this year. So we, we didn't get an, this is probably posted somewhere, so we can see the electronic copy. So when she says, there's a link, we, we don't see the link. We have a hard copy in front of us.
Okay. I can send you out the small newsletter, and I will tell you right here, I have right here.
That would be great.
The COVID, so the COVID, if your child tests positive for COVID, they stay home and isolate for five days. On day six, they may return to school with a mask through day 10. If they're unable to wear a mask, they can use a home test. If negative on day six, they can return to school.
Okay, I was going to say a lot of people.
Exactly the same as the end of last school year.
A lot of people must be testing at home because they're not wearing masks. So.
Yeah, there's no testing in the schools. We, we're not, you know, giving out tests anymore. And it's all really honor-based.
Yeah, it sure is. But we do have COVID in the schools though, right?
We do.
Okay. The data is amazing anyway. It really is. Just incredible to see the work. And it's so nice to see the number of nurses that we have. I mean, going back, you know, I know we date ourselves when we talk about going back. We had nurses traveling between schools and it's just so important that we have that kind of staffing, and I'm thrilled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two quick questions. Great presentation, Andrea. Thank you. So the new software, the uniform reporting software, that must be welcome both for the nurses and you as an administrator?
We've had the software since 2004, I believe, when, when Jane was here. Yeah, yeah. Going back quite a while.
That's not new.
But it, it's not new, but what, what we're trying to do is streamline and be more uniform about how we're documenting. If, if somebody is not documenting that they had five children come in for snacks at one school, but another school is documenting, then there's, the data doesn't matter. So now we're trying to do the same at all schools.
Got it. So the software existed, all, all the same templates, but people weren't populating it uniformly across the board?
Yeah.
So you're just retraining them?
We've streamlined the templates. We're retraining on SNAP. The, the retraining happened last year. We had seven new staff last year. And then prior to that, the main training for SNAP happened when we first got the program.
Yeah. It's so helpful to you.
Very helpful.
To see uniform data across the schools, you know, and, and to report to us. And Mrs. Lebo, give you a shout-out on the data. Thank you for the data. Just one question. I think I heard your answer at the end. So there were more encounters, but fewer documented communications to, to parents and school staff. Is that all COVID-related?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
Because the requirements around communication for COVID were pretty stringent?
Very stringent.
Okay. And, and do you know if the new numbers for documentation correlates with pre-COVID numbers in terms of documentation?
They're close. They're still a little bit higher, a little bit higher than what they used to be. But yeah, looking back at the other data that's there, they're a little bit higher, but getting, getting better.
Thank you for the good job. Great job, all the nurses.
Hi, thank you. I just have a quick question. The, the state mandated screenings that we do, the vision, the hearing, body mass and scoliosis, do we send those results directly to the parents? Do we send those results directly to the parents before students even?
That's a hard question, before students even know, because students usually know as soon as they finish something that, oh, I did not see that well, or.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, they have an inkling, but we're not giving them any kind of confirmation. Any child that has to be referred out gets a letter. We don't send home any norms. It would take an enormous amount of time to send home the norms. We're trying to send home notifications when we're screening, so people are aware. And that when they get the referral letters, they'll know that it's time to get their child, you know, checked. And then the nurses follow up. Each month, they follow up. So if we send a referral and we don't hear back, in 30 days, we follow up. If we don't hear back, in 30 days, we follow up. If we don't hear back, in 30 days, we make phone calls.
So, and we do that with the vision and the hearing?
Vision, hear, and postural screening.
Yeah. And the, because I'm a little concerned like with how we report out or how we notify parents about like a BMI. We don't. So why do we do it?
It's a state mandate.
Okay. Okay, I just, I'm curious about that.
And we actually don't calculate the BMI. We just do a height, weight.
Just do it because we have it?
When it's put into SNAP, SNAP will calculate a BMI, but we're not looking at it.
Yeah, because I just don't want it to be an issue.
It's a hot topic, so, and yeah, we don't want anyone.
Right, okay, thank you. And I love the uniform documentation, which we talk about all the time, especially across all the things that we do in the district. So we have uniform data that we can look at and really understand what we're doing. And then my other question, my last question is that we do parent and info sessions on the prevention for infection prevention, you know, methods and things like that. Do we also do wellness sessions in regard to, you know, nutrition and the importance of nutrition and keeping people healthy with parents?
That's something I know, like middle school and high school, they have the health educators. They go in and they do some lessons all around that. In the elementary schools, the nurses are also doing some of that. And a lot of the nutrition is more on a one-to-one basis than it is in a classroom. The classroom things that they do are hand washing. They do dental health. They do hygiene and growth and development. So as part of the growth and development and hygiene, there is a conversation around picking good foods, nutritional value, things like that.
Yeah, I just think in my opinion is that, you know, probably 80% of our health issues are related to nutrition and the food that we eat, even immunities and how we are in that way. So I was just curious if that's a component that we also try to educate families around. And I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you for your report.
A quick question. What vaccines are now required for students for admission to school?
That's all dependent on their grade levels. So for just blanket, they're required tetanus, diphtheria, pertussis, polio, hepatitis B, measles, mumps, and rubella, and varicella, and meningococcal when they're older. Those are the requireds.
By the state?
By the state.
Thank you.
On the motion of Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, we approve the Health Service Program Improvement Plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
I boast. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Technology Planning and Training Program Improvement Plan. Mr. Cavalo, Mr. Pacho, and Ms. Powers to present.
Good evening. We're pleased to present the Quincy Public Schools 2023-2024 Technology Planning and Training Program Improvement Plan tonight in a time marked by the increased demand for technology enhancements in education, where the need for improvements in infrastructure, hardware, software, data management, and training is constantly increasing. The Quincy Public Schools Technology Planning and Training Team remains committed to dedicated research, resource allocations, and the promotion of educational excellence through technology. Our mission centers on enhancing digital learning, refining assessment methods, enhancing management practices, and promote home-to-school communication. This commitment in innovation is evident in our assessment and reflection processes, our defined goals, actionable steps, and supporting evidence. On page five of our plan, we wanted to reflect on where we have highlighted significant improvements made with our classroom technology, website enhancements, and Aspen usage over the past year. Under the visionary leadership and support of Mayor Koch, Quincy School Committee Superintendent Mulvey and Superintendent's Leadership Team, we secured funding from various sources to meet our technology needs. This includes acquiring laptops, desktops, deploying one-to-one Chromebooks, interactive projectors for the classrooms, and enhancing our online presence. Our collaboration with Quincy Access Television showcases the district's positive aspects and our commitment to further integrate technology into our educational programs with training opportunities to staff and students. Our Program Improvement Plan is designed to enhance the educational experience for students, educators, and parents within Quincy Public Schools District and is driven by SMART goals. These objectives are shaped in close collaboration with the Superintendent's Leadership Team, Program Directors, Principals, and the Digital Learning Teams. They not only guide our path in the upcoming year, but also enable continuous evaluation of our district's readiness, support for students and educators, and assessment of the effectiveness of existing technologies. Our first goal on page six is a continuous goal. It focuses on improving Aspen Student Information System usability. With this goal, our primary objective is to continuously enhance the usability of Aspen Student Information System for school staff members, including teachers, counselors, tenants officers, secretaries, and school administration. We are committed to offering training and support to ensure Aspen becomes an invaluable resource for all stakeholders. Goal number two, which is on page seven, this is a continuous goal, to enhance the scheduling processes across all grade levels. The scheduling process is of key importance in the school operations. We are dedicated to refining the process. We intend to evaluate current scheduling practices, uphold transparent scheduling timelines, and ensure the punctual completion of schedules for all grade levels while adhering to federal, state, and local guidelines. On page eight, you'll find our third goal, which is a continuous goal, elevating home-to-school communication. Transparent and accessible communication between the school and home is indispensable. We will remain consistent, transparent, and accessible digital communication channels, including the district and school websites and district social media. We'll use feedback from families to enhance our digital communication strategies. On page nine, you'll find our fourth goal, which is a continuous goal, supporting computer-based online assessments. Computer-based assessments play a key role in education. Our team is supporting the implementation of these assessments, collaborating with various stakeholders, including the Curriculum Assessment and Management Team, IT Operations Team, and the IT Technicians Team. Goal number five is on page 10. This is a continuous goal, providing technology planning and training opportunities. Equipping educators and students with digital proficiency is essential. We will work closely with the digital learning teams to identify training opportunities, facilitate new features of Aspen, and offer training in Google Classroom and other educational tools. Our last goal is on page 13, goal number six. This is a continuous goal, identifying funding opportunities for digital learning and classroom technology, sustaining our technology financial support. We will actively seek funding opportunities, including grants, partnerships, to ensure the sustained growth of our digital learning and classroom initiatives. These six goals represent our commitment to offer an innovative, technology-driven education for Quincy Public Schools. We will build on past achievements, continue our efforts, and embrace new initiatives for future technologies. Tonight, I'm pleased to be joined by Kelly Powers, our Digital Communications and Web Accessibility Specialist, and Daniel Paco, our IT Data Coordinator. Tonight, Mr. Segala could not join us this evening. He's participating in an early college high school site visitation study in Fort Worth, Texas. We'll be happy to take any questions or comments that you have at this time.
Thank you. First of all, Bob, thank you and the team for everything you do, you know. I know how much IT matters to the effectiveness of any organization. And you guys just do an amazing job. So thank you for the hardware and the software. Thank you for the interactive projectors, which I know are incredibly meaningful inside each and every classroom. For the role that you all play on the digital literacy team, that's super important to me. I value that. And it was, I think it was Dan last year that just blew me away with the Aspen numbers. Was that you, Dan? And so this year, the school committee reached an agreement with the teachers to mandate Aspen at certain levels and certain grade levels. And so I had two questions. One, if Dan, not to quiz you on sight, but if you could just tell us a little bit about the usage of Aspen over the course of the last year, where the numbers lie, and specifically about training in the wake of the new agreement that the school committee has?
Sure. Yeah, I'll be, I'll try to answer that. So in terms of numbers, I don't have anything concrete as far as analytics so far. I can look that up for you and get back to you. But as far as what we've tried to do with, so first thing, you know, one highlight that we have is that, obviously, like we're getting like class attendance, period attendance is currently being utilized at the school level, like specifically at the high school level. So every period attendance is taken, so that's part of the gradebook process. The other thing, too, is that, you know, we are, as of this year, we have the Google to Aspen gradebook import. So we have the training documents of that posted in the teacher's support page. And that's kind of, you know, where, that's our central hub for all the training. And anything that comes up, the way we've been trying to address it is that look for trends, address it as quickly as I can, get out training documents, a lot of screenshots, not just, you know, step one, here's statement, and screenshots on how they can do it. So that's setting up their gradebook categories, adding assignments in there, checking on student grades. And hopefully, you know, as we continue to add those resources for our teachers, the more comfortable they get, the more activity we're going to have in Aspen.
You believe the numbers are comparable, if not higher, in terms of student or parent access to Aspen?
Yes, yeah.
And I can't remember the exact numbers, but they just blew me away last year, how high they were. And, you know, I also wanted to say to Kelly, the website looks great. You know, you may not think that we can see the changes, but sometimes we can, the usability of it and the information there. And then the last thing that I just wanted to say is when we sit with all the principals and we go through the school improvement plans, we talk about facility needs, but also technology needs. Can you just speak a little, and we want them to disclose technology needs as well as facility needs, so that we're aware of what needs to be done. But we also want to make sure that there's follow-up on some of those. Is there anything, Bob, that you might want to say about maybe what was in last year's school improvement plans? And any work you all have done to address those aspects?
Yeah. So we definitely, so at the end of last year, April, May, we reach out to the principals to figure out what the technology needs are in the building. In the appendix, the 2023-2024 QPS acquisition of instructional technology, the blue sheet. This gives a breakdown of what we purchased based on the needs. We were able to purchase 200 desktops for classroom teachers, 300 laptops, 65 interactive projectors, and 1,500 Chromebooks to start replacing grade six and grade nine across the district for the one-to-one initiative.
Were there any needs that come to mind that were unmet because of?
We're still waiting for the projectors to come in. We ordered them this summer, and they just haven't been back.
And yet, were there a lot, there were a lot of projectors?
So the 65, yes.
65, yeah, that's a lot. Okay, when do you anticipate?
We're hoping by end of October to get them in, yeah.
Great. No further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, because I was looking at the equipment and how it was allocated throughout the schools and where there was deficits and things, so that you're addressing that. The, I wanted to say to Kelly, thank you, because I do follow you guys on social media and also, you know, on the website and the different schools and stuff. And I think that's huge, because, you know, where do we all go? First place we're going is to the websites to get information. And if you can't find it, then it's frustrating, and it just is a frustration for everyone. So I think it's been great, and I want to say thank you for that. And just another question, I think that, and, you know, the challenge is real with technology and having to stay on top of everything and being able to accommodate all the changes. Do you, as a department, find that you have any challenges in your department that you need to, that we should be looking at to be able to help address some of the changes that have happened?
Sure. Technology changes every day, as you guys know. So just keeping up with it is just the challenge. Teachers want the newest and latest, greatest technology, new interactive boards. So just staying on top of the replacement plans for them.
Is important. And also, the, as far as like training people on the new software, do you have enough time and, you know, to be able to do that with the staff?
Yeah, I mean, we offer different trainings throughout the year on any of the products, new features within Aspen, as well as the other educational tools.
Okay, so you feel good. And last, the last piece is, do our parents get training on Aspen and how to access their student records?
So I think that's for me. So I actually, this year, Kelly and I worked together on getting an introduction to Aspen site. And we kind of just started off as like first time logging in. You know, like what prompts are you going to be expecting? You know, like your password is going to expire, but that's expected because that's a temporary password, things like that. Within there, too, is, you know, how to download student report cards, how to view the family portal, things like that. And overall, you know, we have, and like the things that kind of fall outside of that, we have a general Aspen support line. Actually, you know, speaking of numbers, for September so far, you know, we have 230 individual tickets, right? That's, and that varies. That's just one contact. And there could be responses back and forth from that one ticket. So that's helping parents get through family portal, resetting students. And the rest of it is kind of triaging. You know, troubleshooting Aspen, I'm not seeing this, I'm not seeing that. So, yeah, so beginning of the school year, we have 230 tickets and, you know, resolved. And, you know, we get them every day.
Good, I'm sure you do. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just to reiterate what my colleagues are saying, the website and social media is wonderful. You're doing a great job. Thank you so much for that. Greatly appreciate it. And on the computer note, it says that 200 of the desktop computers that are eight years old were replaced. But I see here that it says there are 1,001 that are actually over eight years old. So that's 801 that are left. Are we going to need to be replacing them soon? Because I know the life of a laptop, of a desktop computer is not that great. So eight years plus is not.
Yeah.
How much longer do we have on those?
Yes, we were, definitely, this is the plan that we work. We do have 1,001 devices out there that are right around eight, eight-plus years old.
Oh, that doesn't count the replacing the 200 of them?
Sorry, it does, yes. They're not included in this. Yeah, so right around 800 is where we're at today. We do upgrade these devices, though, throughout the year as well. When they reach a certain age, we add more RAM to them, swap out the hard drives. So we do keep them working in good condition as they get older.
Okay, so it sounds like we need to look at replacing more of them right now. You're good with them right now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Santoro, so thank you so much for this. I really appreciate it. I'm glad that my colleague, Mrs. Kay, asked about parents and Aspen, because I think that's really important, because some of the parents just don't know how to use it. And I wonder if there's students who don't really know how to use it. I could ask our young colleagues here. Are the students pretty comfortable using Aspen, do you think? Are the students pretty comfortable using Aspen, do you think?
So, can you, yeah, so I would say most students already are comfortable using the technology, just login and go into your academics, and it's pretty self-explanatory, but if you're not, we have resources, like, you can go to guidance and ask your guidance counselor how to use it. You can go onto Google Classroom, which is really user-friendly, and then there's like posted slideshows as how you use it, and, yeah.
So, that's, I'm glad you feel pretty comfortable, too?
Yeah, as far as I know, a lot of Quincy High students use Aspen, or most, especially because some teachers upload grades and assignments on there, so it's a great place to view what each student is missing. The biggest complaint I hear, though, amongst like the students is the password resetting, because it asks you to reset the password sometimes, and you can't use any of the previous passwords, and so you have to kind of come up with new passwords every time. So, that's the only thing that I, you know, hear about it, but other than that, no, it's a great website.
I feel that way about most software that I use. Can I, can I just use the password that I want to use, and they won't let me? So, but, yeah, it's absolutely true. So, on page five, you talked about the Chromebooks. How many do we have deployed right now?
Sorry.
How many Chromebooks do we have deployed?
So, we are one-to-one with grades three through 12, so every student has those. We have roughly around, I believe, 8,000 district-wide. A lot of schools still have Chromebook carts in the buildings for the younger grades, so those vary between two to four or five carts per building.
And you brought them all in over the summer and played with them and put them back out?
The, in the carts, or?
No, did everybody's Chromebook come in?
We collect only the students that are moving to the next grade, next school.
So, if you're staying in elementary school, you've got to keep your Chromebook?
Till grade five, and then when you left. So, we collected grade five, we collected grade eight, and grade 12 Chromebooks.
Were people leaving the district, are they taking them with them?
We've had a few. We disable them once they're, once we're aware of that, and we have, they have shipped back some randomly, so we have recovered some.
Thank you very much. And like my, my question was about the first goal, was about parents and students getting what they needed with Aspen also. And on page, continuation goal about communication is amazing to me. The communication, I agree with the website and the social media, I mean, you're everywhere.
Feel that way sometimes.
You really are everywhere, which is good. I mean, people can't say they don't know what's going on, so I'm really, really happy with those goals. I have a couple of questions about the software and then one big question. So, on the green page, what is M O Y S L E?
So, MoZl is a management software for iPads. It allows us to push out the applications directly to the iPads.
Okay. And BMC Trakit, is that a plagiarism-type thing?
So, that is our current ticket service.
Oh, okay, so you can track when, okay.
Yeah, and I know you guys brought up Incident IQ in the prior one. So, Incident IQ is actually a new ticketing service system that we're implementing.
Incidents for you guys?
Yes, yes. It's built into asset management for the devices.
And the computer technician, the problem that you're having with getting computer technicians, hopefully the change we've made will help that.
We've seen an increase in applicants, and we've hired one, which starts in, who starts in two weeks, and we're continuing the interview process.
That's wonderful. And so, my last thing, oh, my second last thing, I look on the blue sheet, and you are, Mr. Mulvey's not, Mr. Malone, Mulaney's not with us, but we were 439,000 over budget?
We are, but we, so we ended up using surplus funding from the 2022-2023 budget, and we were able to.
Did we give you a bigger budget this year?
No.
We're just going to keep finding what he's covering, knowing that he's going to have this? I mean, my last question is a little more complicated, and I'd like to really hear from my young colleagues again. I'm very concerned about never seeing anything about ChatGPT anyplace or artificial intelligence and what we're going to do about that, because they know more about it than any of us do. And it's really scary to me that we just don't know anything about it. And hopefully, our teachers are going to, I know there's a professional development in November that they're going to touch upon that, but are you guys on top of that, or are you, are you scared like I am?
Not so scared. It can be used as a great tool. We are familiar with it.
It can be a great tool. It can be a great tool. It can be a lot of things, though, besides a great tool. I think, you know, I've heard from other districts out there, you can't make a policy around it, because we don't even really know what it is, but we might have to think about some guidelines. You guys know what I'm talking about. We might have to think about some guidelines to work with our students and stuff, and some expectations. I know we have acceptable use policies, but we might have to have a policy on academic integrity and how that relates to it, something like that, where we could have parents and students sign off on academic integrity. So, would you like to add something to that? Because I'm scared.
I'm actually a huge advocate for it, only because I believe that if we taught students how to use it in the right way and how to ask the right questions, it could be very beneficial. Also, ChatGPT isn't 100% accurate, or it doesn't always give reliable information, so we should warn students that like, although they can use it as like a beneficial tool, they shouldn't completely rely on it, because it's not going to, I guess.
As someone told me, it doesn't lie on purpose, but it's never going to say, I don't know. It never says, I don't know, if you ask a question.
Yeah, no, it doesn't.
But it's not going to lie on purpose.
It could even like make up answers, like, especially if like regarding a book or certain.
Sites, yeah, citing, and we'll make up citing all over the place, yeah. It'll cite things that don't exist.
Accurate or reliable.
Yeah, I agree that it's a great tool, but I think that there's, there's so many ways it can be misused, and I, people not checking their sources is going to be one thing. And I know even if you used some sort of software to check for plagiarism, I understand that it's false positives much more than false negatives, so it's thinking that it's plagiarism when it isn't, so. But I, it's out there, I know, I'm not saying we shouldn't have it, but I'm just worried that we don't know enough about it as much as you guys do. Thank you very much for this, so I'm hoping I'll see that on the professional development plan. I'm excited about that.
You know, I raised my hand for a second time a couple of minutes ago, and it was exactly to talk about that issue and to ask you about artificial intelligence. So, this past week, and I was with a colleague, and we spent like an hour going through ChatGPT, and we were writing speeches, we were writing press releases, we were, you know, he was writing ads. It just blew me away, the capabilities that's at our fingertips, but, I mean, it, there's a piece for your group that's in it, but it's a bigger, it's a bigger policy piece, you know, that we need to talk about, and I think we need to, I'd like to make a referral to, I don't know if it's to policy or whatever. Artificial intelligence is in policy?
No, no, it's on the agenda.
For which subcommittee? Oh, previously.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, it's on the agenda to go on, yeah. The, yeah, and the question is which, which subcommittee, you know, because there, but it's bigger than that, you know? I mean, ultimately, I believe you're right, that we need a policy on it.
Close to putting a policy around this.
We're not close.
No one's close to putting a policy around this. Guidelines, perhaps, but not a policy.
Yeah, well, we need, we need to have, I mean, a deep dive discussion in a variety of different ways, because the tools are, I mean, just the training for us to get educated on what tools are out there in terms of AI in the education space, or how it could be used or misused, would be, I think, invaluable for this school committee to have. So, the education piece, before we can even embark on the discussion and the integrity, you know, academic integrity piece and everything else, but for teachers, for staff, for students, for everybody, but it's out there in a big way, and people are probably using it, and we're misusing it, so I'm glad it's on the agenda. Thank you.
I have two points. The first one is in response to the ChatGPT one, and, yeah, so I have two points. One is in response to the ChatGPT one. So, I have some teachers, and they probably want me to say this, but right now, they, they're struggling. They don't know what to do, so normally, they'll like assign a take-home essay, and then you like spend a lot of time on it, and you work really hard on it, right? But last year, there were incidents, well, you can't really like prove they use ChatGPT, but like your writing level suddenly goes up a lot, then you probably, so now, they're like, well, I want you to do all this content, but now, you, I can't give it to you, because people will abuse the system, and I don't want to spend, spend hours grading ChatGPT essays, so they just want guidance, and they want it fast, because like the ways they're using it, they're trying to use like online detectors, but they don't want to waste their time like copying and pasting your essay into like five different online detectors to have like half of them be false positives, and they just need like guidance, and they just don't know what to do, like fast.
I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Lebo, and I'm not sure if Mrs. Hubley, but for bringing the girls on and our representatives from the high school, because it's an amazing addition to hear you, you're so smart, which I love, and to hear your input, because it's important for us. In terms of the ChatGPT, what you were saying about, you know, the kids going and using them to write essays, I don't know if my colleagues remember, but when we were at the North Quincy High School's graduation, the valedictorian, I think it was, she did the whole speech, and, you know, she did her speech, and then it was kind of generic, you know, and, and she said, oh, how was that speech? It was a little like, I don't know, she said boring, but she goes, that was all ChatGPT. So, I think your personality, your own identity, knowledge, experience doesn't come across in a ChatGPT essay. It's maybe just a start to get you thinking in a direction, but it's supposed, but you have to bring yourself into that, you know, to make it be something that's your own. But it's a big discussion that, and you guys know more about it than we do, but thank you for having them come and really pushing to have them join us. Yeah, you're great. Thank you. They're not shy, no.
Anybody else?
I think she had another point.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't know if you guys can do this, but we can't change the picture on our Google accounts. I know there was like an incident a while ago, but a lot of people like want, probably want me to say this, because they're stuck with like a picture they changed in fourth grade, and they kind of don't want it. So, and like some people, some of us just want to change it, or like maybe have a system where like high schoolers can change it, so we're not going to be like, yeah, like something just so we can express ourselves a bit.
So, we did have to lock that a few years ago. Some students were uploading inappropriate pictures, so it is locked. If you want to remove your picture, you can send a request to the, our support email for, I believe it's googlesupport@quincypublicschools.com, and our Chromebook specialist will remove the picture for you. No, no, we're just removing them.
Thank you. Okay, motion of Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Gattro. We approve the technology planning and training program improvement plan. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Appointment to school nurse superintendent.
Thank you. At your place is a, is the resume of Caitlin Conneran. She is a licensed school nurse, and she is designated to be the nurse at Southwest Middle School. After your review, I would ask for your approval of this appointment.
Motion of Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, superintendent.
Mr. Bergoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gattro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro.
Yes.
Maya Coke.
Thank you.
Thank you. On November 8th through 10th, I will be attending the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Conference. Myself and Mrs. Lebo will be attending, but I'm asking if you can vote me in as being the delegate for voting at the convention.
Motion of Mr. Bergoli, seconded by Mrs. Cahill. We approve, superintendent.
Mr. Bergoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gattro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro.
Yes.
Maya Coke.
I may add that I believe that at the conference, there is going to be a workshop on AI, so when Mrs. Leo, Lebo and I attend, we can bring back some information.
Okay. TC grant of $150,000 for early college high school. Motion, Mr. Bergoli, seconded by Mrs. Hubley. We approve, superintendent.
Mr. Bergoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gattro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro.
Yes.
Maya Coke.
I'm sorry, superintendent. Do you want to speak?
That's fine, we can just go right through and approve them. If anyone needs any information, I'll be happy to speak to them.
State street credit, $150,000 for early college high school. Motion, Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. We approve, superintendent.
Mr. Bergoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gattro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro.
Yes.
Maya Coke.
Jazz high of social workforce, board grid, $22,000 for connecting activities. Motion, Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Bergoli. We approve, superintendent.
Mr. Bergoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gattro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro.
Yes.
Maya Coke.
DC grant, continuation grant of $170,000 for growing literacy equity across Mass. Bleem, year number three. Motion of Mr. Gattro, seconded by Mrs. Cahill. We approve, superintendent.
Mr. Bergoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gattro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro.
Yes.
Maya Coke.
SD math grant, $32,000 for Lincoln Hancock and Clifford Marshall, grade four.
On that, thank you. On that grant, that is a typo, so it should say $3,200, not $32,000.
Big typo.
It is a big typo. So, there was an extra zero added.
Okay.
So, that's for $3,200.
Thank you. Duly noted. Okay, we're going this way. Mr. Bergoli made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, superintendent.
Mr. Bergoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gattro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro.
Yes.
Maya Coke.
Item K, donation from Quirk Subaru for $3,000 to Point Webster. Mrs. Lebo on the motion.
Do we know what this money is going to be used for?
Yes, so Quirk Subaru recently made a donation of $3,000 to the Point Webster Middle School through their Adopt a Classroom program. Six classrooms will receive $500 each to use for books, supplies, or equipment to enhance learning opportunities.
Thank you.
Motion, Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, superintendent.
Mr. Bergoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gattro.
Yes.